items regarding American Rescue Plan of 2021, ARPA Funding Priorities and Allocations. Marissa.
Thank you. So the item on the agenda comes with a recommendation to approve premium pay for essential employees as proposed, and then schedule a public workshop to discuss additional funding priorities. To date, the city of Kalinga has received $637,387 in COVID-related funds outside of the ARPA funding. There's a list of items that council approved from that funding. We have mortgage and utility assistance that is still going on right now. There is still money available. We also have small business grants. 100% of those funds are still available. And then we received that CARES grant from Fresno County, and at that time, we did rental assistance, small business grants, and utility assistance. And then we did the recruitment of the expensed funds within the city related to COVID. The city did not receive $212,358 in CARES Act funding as it was withheld by the state of California in response to the city's resolution declaring all Kalinga businesses as essential. We are told that the state allocated these funds to pay for that mobile testing unit that you see within the city. Initially, the city was told that we would receive $3.23 million in ARPA funds. However, after the US Department of Treasury modified the formula used to calculate ARPA payments to non-entitlement cities, the city of Kalinga will be receiving $4.1 million. The coverage period is March 3rd, 2021 through December 31st, 2024, meaning this is the period where funds must be allocated, and then all funds must be spent by December 31st, 2026. The following is a list of the only allowable uses of the funds. The first is to support public health expenditures by, for example, funding COVID-19 mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, and certain public health and safety staff. The second is to address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, including economic harms to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries, and the public sector. The third is to replace lost public sector revenue, using this funding to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue experienced due to the pandemic. The fourth is to provide premium pay for essential workers, offering additional support to those who have and will bear the greatest health risks because of their service in critical infrastructure sectors. And the fifth is to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, making necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water, support vital wastewater and storm drain infrastructure, and to expand access to broadband internet. Below is a list of cities who have approved or are considering premium pay for essential employees with ARPA funds. The city of Kingsburg approved 5% for all employees. The city of Parler approved 2,500 for all employees. The city of Reedley approved 5% for all employees. The city of Sanger approved $13 per hour up to a cap of $3,000 for all employees. The city of Lamora is considering premium pay for all employees with no definitive amount set yet. The city of Mendota approved $13 per hour up to a cap of $12,500 for all employees. The city of Avonel is considering between $14,000 and $16,000 for all employees, and the city of Corcoran already approved $25,000 for all employees, which is the max allowed for premium pay with the ARPA funds. ARPA caps the premium pay allowance at $25,000 per essential employee. The recommended premium pay is $1,000 per month, per essential employee, for each full month worked from June 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2021. In order to be eligible, the employee must still be employed with the city as of the date the checks are made payable. This caps premium pay at $12,000 per employee. During the period of June 2020 through May of 2021, all city staff was working onsite and not working from home, with the occasional exception of an employee required to quarantine for 10 days after a positive COVID test or exposure, or for short-term childcare needs. From May 26, 2020, City Hall was open to the community by appointment, and October 12, 2020, appointments were no longer required for entry. The $1,000 per month premium pay as recommended averages out to be $10,604.65 per employee. These payments would be paid through payroll as supplemental wages, which have a total tax rate of 36%, resulting in the average net amount of $6,786.98. The total fiscal impact associated with the premium pay is $912,000 to include all city staff. Elected and appointed officials are not included pursuant to Article 2 of the City of Kalinga Municipal Code, unless otherwise directed by the city council. Of the 912,122,561 must be supported by written justification of how premium pay is responsive to individuals performing essential work during the public health emergency. If the premium pay is approved by council as recommended, this would leave 3.1, just under $3.2 million to be allocated, as outlined in the bullet points above under the background portion of the staff report, which is only $32,418 less than the initial amount of ARPA funds the city was expecting to receive, which was the 3.23 million. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public workshop for input from the community on how to allocate those remaining funds. The 912,000 cost in premium pay from the 4.1 million in ARPA funds is approximately 22% of the total. Staff does have a list of recommended projects that will be presented during the workshop. I've also been asked recently, like, why the $1,000 a month is the recommendation? And the reason why that is my recommendation, and I stand by that, is I briefly mentioned earlier how the city does not pay into unemployment insurance. We pay dollar-for-dollar for every claim that's filed, not counting CARES money for unemployment that was in addition to the standard unemployment amount. The maximum unemployment amount in California is $450 a week, which is what all of our city employees would have gotten had they quit. And the unemployment office was allowing employees to quit due to childcare needs with school closures due to COVID, or if they considered themselves to be at risk with underlying health conditions. So had our employees quit, and we would have been paying out dollar-for-dollar, we would not have been receiving work from them, and we would be paying out about over $1,900 a month per employee to be at home getting unemployment. And so I want everyone to know this is just a recommendation. That's what I do with all staff reports. I make a recommendation. The council may approve it as recommended. You may make changes to it and approve it with changes. You may not approve it. So this is not something that is set in stone, that people should feel is expected or entitled. But I did place it on here. I stand by that number. I think it's fair and reasonable. But I respect that not everybody may think that, and everybody should respect whatever decision you make tonight.
Okay, on that, you said that there's still 100% of the businesses? That part for the businesses? Nobody's applied?
I don't know. They don't apply through the city. They apply through self-help. So there may have been some who have applied, but no funds have been expensed yet. So it could be that they're waiting on additional paperwork from them. At the beginning of the summer, I did print out the applications, and then I got a list of businesses within the city with active business licenses with a Kalinga address from Yasmin, and I mailed the applications to every business in Kalinga with a active business license.
There's very strict conditions for them to get that money. And one of the conditions, which is the biggest hurdle for our local businesses to overcome, is they have to have a 25% decrease in revenue compared to the year before. Well, that's very difficult. I mean, 25% decrease would probably put a lot of these places out of business. And plus, we, you know, passed the resolution to keep all businesses essential, so a lot of them stayed open. So it's very difficult to get some of that money unless you had a 25% decrease in revenue. So that's why I think a lot of that money is still in there.
Thank you. Okay, any questions?
So I'm never one to shy away from giving you my opinion. Quit laughing in the back. I've said it before, no one, this isn't going to surprise anybody. I've said it before, I think $12,000 is too much. I think we are a community of very poor people. When we look at the median income of the city of Kalinga, we see that $62,000 per household. Now, per household generally means that there's more than one worker in that household, so we break that down into about $31,000 per person. And if we give out $12,000 bonuses, we're giving out about 40% of the income for the average Kalinga worker. For me, I think that's a slap in the face to them. I want you to have a bonus. I think that 12,000 is a little too much. I think 22% or close to 25% of the total, one out of every $4 that we're getting from the federal government is going to go to employee bonuses. I think that's too much. I think we just passed $12 or $13 million in bonds that the city, that the citizens of Kalinga are going to spend 30 years paying for. 30 years. All of us up here are going to be dead in 30 years.
Not me.
Except for Ron. He's got the bionic heart. He's going to keep going. They're still going to be paying that because of what we, the decisions that we make here. For 30 years, they'll be paying $12 million in bonds. I think that's unfair. I think that's unfair that they have to pay 30 years, and then we're giving out a lot of money in bonuses. That's not to say that I don't agree that you guys should get a bonus. I do. I just think that 12,000 is too much for the city that we live in. When we look at other big places like San Diego County, they're not spending 22% of their ARPA funds on bonuses. They're spending 9% of their ARPA funds on bonuses. Most cities are not spending this amount of money on bonuses, and it's a lot of money. $12,000 is a lot of money. Most of us worked up, most of us up here worked through this pandemic. State employees got money taken away, then got money back. My wife works at the college. She got furloughed. A lot of people in Kalinga have lost money during this timeframe. And when they see that the city's giving out bonuses of this amount, it's a slap in their face. I'm sorry, but it is. I still love y'all. I still, I mean, I just approved 13 cars, 13 new cars for you, $150,000 bucket truck. So it doesn't, it isn't a personal attack on city employees. And if anybody's mad, do not be mad at city employees. Be mad at the five people up here that you put up here who are voting this one way or the other. These are the people that we should be mad at, not any city employees. If this passes, it's on us. If this doesn't pass, it's on us. This isn't the city employee-related. Anyways, so in good conscience, I just cannot vote for a $12,000 bonus in 25% of our funds when we still need many upgrades at the city. We have water systems that are 50-plus years old. We have, we need solar going in soon. We're spending a lot of money on energy. So I'm for a bonus. I'm for about half that probably with an extra additional bonus if one of the employees got COVID during that timeframe. But I cannot vote for $12,000 in bonuses when we have a whole list of projects that we need to take care of in our infrastructure. Still love y'all. I hope you're not mad at me. It's okay if you are, but y'all can talk to me anytime you want to.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Anybody else? Go ahead.
I think every opinion should be like that, and I think it's not bad. It's a no, it's not bad if it's a yes. I myself want to look back in 1983, when we had that devastating earthquake. Who was out there? It was first responders. It was city employees trying to get everything going. That time, nothing, they didn't get a bonus, they didn't get nothing. I don't want to call this a bonus. I want to call this a thank you. You know, it could be tragic if somebody gets sick, they take it to their family. One of the youngsters gets sick, and they have to still stay out of work. That would be a tragic. I lived through the 1983, and I seen the devastation that we had in this city. I seen the employees, I seen the officers. They were going out there without, not even sleeping. They didn't, them caring about their sleep, they didn't, they didn't go through their hair, their head, I mean. I think, I understand it's $12,000, and like, as Scott said, not all of it is going to go to them. But if we kind of have it right now, and I understand we have projects, and that's not, that's not their fault. 40 years ago, 30 years ago, 20 years, these things weren't getting fixed as they should. That's, that's not the employee's fault. That's just back in the day. Now, that this money has been blessed to be given as a way to thank you, and the way that we're going through this society with this pandemic, I don't think $12,000 is too much for that. I mean, he's not higher than him, he's not higher than him, he's not higher than him. I think with employee, during a rainstorm, who's out there? Who's out there getting wet and almost getting sick? Public Works, who's out there in emergency? Fire, fire and police department. It's them that keep this city going. A lot of the staff. It's amazing when I walk in this building and I, and I ask, how can we do this? Right there, they dropped their job, and they're getting to it so it can be formatted in a professional way. I thank them for that. My opinion, it's just a thank you. It's a thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, what are you classifying this as? Because I know it's not a bonus.
Right, so it's premium pay. So premium pay is generally tied to hours. It's, premium pay is considered a wage. So I know there's been a lot of confusion, especially on Facebook posts, about how premium pay can be paid. Premium pay is a wage that you can pay to your employees. The reason that it's not recommended at an hourly, and it's recommended at a flat dollar amount is because one of the things that is recommended is to do it as a flat dollar amount, because if you did it as a percentage, then those who made more would receive more in premium pay. And doing it as a flat dollar amount by month rather than by hour ensures that, like, our police technicians who work 19 hours a week, or some of the temps that we have working in Public Works are receiving the same amount versus only if they're working 19 hours a week, that, a less amount because of the hours they work. So no, technically, it's not considered a bonus. It is a, it's premium pay, which is generally attached to hours worked.
And the same amount for part-time and full-time?
That's how it is written, yes.
But you had to work. I mean, it's those certain amounts, I'm sorry.
It's an easy but difficult situation. This opportunity, even though it's came in tragedy, it's a great opportunity to have. Because it doesn't, it's not affected by the city. It's money that was given to the city to do what she felt needed to be done. So the only main question, because people out here say yes, they say no, they say why, they say how. It's not for me to make my personal decision on what the city should do with the money. I always take it as what the people I speak to, what do they say? They put me in this position, I speak for them. To speak for myself, I'd say give it to them. I don't want to be mean, but I couldn't care less because it doesn't come out of my pocket. But the people out there, the ones that put me in this place, have a different ideology on how it should be done. And so for that, I can't put a price on what they do. I can't put a price on what he does compared to what you do. Nobody can. Nobody can. Nobody can say because he's the chief, he should get more because he's out there, or because he's out there in the rain, he should get more. I don't know how to put a price on it. I know people say it's too much, but what is not enough? If you say give them half, is that still equitable? It's something because it's nothing that was there before. So yeah, it's something, but to put a price on it is the juggling point. And as a city manager, no disrespect at all, I'd probably done the same thing. Take what is extra and give it to my workers. That's the bottom line. So it's up for, like you said, us five to determine if that amount is viable, yeah, sure. Or if that amount should be adjusted. In some cases, some people say higher because the fire PD workers were out there directly, because you can't tell the PD, because the guy got COVID, let him go. We're getting where they done have COVID. You can't do that. You can't tell the chief and his guys, because the guy in the back got COVID when you go to CSH to pick him up. Don't get him, he's got COVID. Whoa, he has to follow through with that. That, that's automatic. And people on the other hand say, well, the ladies behind the glass, they're behind the glass, but they're still here. COVID isn't that smart to say there's glass, I can't go in there. It just doesn't happen like that. It just doesn't happen like that. So to put a price on this, I don't know how. I mean, should we? Eh, maybe, should we? Eh, maybe not? And that, that's the biggest argument, debate on how much do we? I don't say give them, how much have they earned? Because to say give doesn't mean that you didn't do nothing to get it, but you did correctly a heck of a lot to get to that point. So it's not a bonus. It ain't a gift certificate. It's what you guys earned and still working. But to put a price on it, I don't know. I don't know how to put a price on that. Mayor?
Okay, now, okay.
Adam, one thing I respect about you most is your financial responsibility to the people in the community. One question I do want to ask is you can't give dollars and cents on employee salaries and this and that, but you throw out that the average medium income is $62,000. How many of our employees fall underneath that medium income? Yes, there's one end that makes quite a bit, other end makes middle. But this will really benefit those who are in the $30,000, $35,000, $40,000 income. And again, it's a gift. So I mean, how many of the people that are going to benefit from this can it really impact and make an impact in their, their life? I mean, if I could do it to my employees, I absolutely would. And if I can digress one second, you asked about that money for the, the businesses that hadn't been touched? And you mentioned the fact that it's the 25%. I can tell you, we dropped almost 80% of our income in that year. But when you drop that kind of income, you got to start cutting things out, just to even make it to the other end. And that list of things that they require, couple of those things get dropped just to survive to the end. If I could get that, qualify for that, and then get those things back, I absolutely would. But a lot of these businesses, I know the reason they can't apply is there may be one thing on there that they're not current on, or one thing on there that they need to get caught up on. And that's what limits those businesses from applying for all the money that's out there. If they had offered that eight months ago, we probably would have been fine. But now, a year and a half after the fact, you got to make cuts. You got to, you got to take out the acts, you know, get down to the bare bones, basically, to get to the other side. So that's why it isn't that, I know there's money out there, and I know there's a lot of businesses that need it, but I also know, you know, when it became available, a lot of it, you know, some of the requirements they have are very strict, and some of us just couldn't meet those. But again, as far as the money for the ARPA, respect what your guys' decision is. And I like the fact, you know, Adam, we can always hold you to bring up the money and hold the council accountable. But again, the people that are going to benefit from this the most, I believe, are in that low income, medium income, average income you're talking about. And I, I just, you know, I want that brought out too. Yes, some of those that may not benefit as much will get it as well. But the ones that really need it and will help out, you know, I, I think they deserve it. But thank you.
Scott, could you stand there for a second?
Yes.
When you said that, what, what you said about your business and stuff, I wanted, if you, you're representing the chamber right now, I mean, you're representing yourself right now. But I want to ask you if you would represent the chamber right now and go to Sacramento with us and tell them that. I mean, because there's a lot of businesses that are just like you. They, they can't apply for these things, so let's get them changed. You know, can you do that with me? I mean, I'll go with you, or Adam, I'm sorry, Adam will go with you, or, or any of us will go with you. And we'll try to get some of this stuff changed so we can get that money for these people. I mean, things change all the time, and if times change, I mean, we, we got to take care of it, and we can't just let it go. They say it's this thing, but this is why we can't do it.
Yeah.
So let's try to, we'll talk to our representatives first, and then we'll, I'll get with you and see what we can do. And maybe we can represent Kalinga and go get some more money for us.
Right, yeah. Again, I just know there's a lot of businesses that were suffering and needed it.
Exactly.
And the only reason we made it through were some of the decisions that you all made.
Exactly.
And, but again, I know some of these bigger $35,000 grant, $40,000 a year, we can apply for that. I know all people hear about is all this grant money that's available to small businesses. But some of the loopholes that make you go through some of the requirements, we could have made it back in June of last year. But after a year and a half of this, you know, it's, some of us don't necessarily qualify at this moment, you know? So that, that's the only thing. I just heard you question why none of it had been claimed yet, and I, I don't know why some haven't. You know, and again, a lot, I know several that have applied, and it may be in the process. But I do know that that's why some of us haven't, is because we've had to make tough, you know? And it wasn't just, and they're just the 25%. Like I said, we submitted our stuff to the city when they, you know, they graciously granted that 5,000 back when, and we qualify for that. But I mean, the paper we submitted showed we were down like 78% from the year before. So I mean, it, it was tough times for everybody. But again, you know, anything I can do, mayor, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now it's my turn. I think this was all waiting on my decision because we had a two-to-two vote last time. But right now, I've been, I've been here a long time, and seeing these people out here, I mean, it's hard. Excuse me. You get emotional. I mean, we haven't been able to do this in a long time. We've always told these people, no, I'm sorry, we can't afford it, and we couldn't afford it. But now we can afford it. We're not giving them the whole $25,000. We said, our, our city manager said half of that. I mean, I'm saying, let's give it to them. I mean, they deserve it. I mean, these guys will do anything for you. I mean, these guys and girls. I mean, if it wasn't for the girls inside the office, these guys wouldn't be working. I mean, because the girls put out all the work for them too. So it's not just the guys that are out in the field. It's, it's a little bit of everybody. And it's hard. I mean, you get to know these people, and I take it offense too. I have people that I'm related to that work for the city. I've never put them first with this, with the other employees. I've never done that. And I'm telling you right now, I've never done that. And I've had people that are related to me die because they're, they're working for this city, and then they have a heart attack, and they died in the hospital here. I mean, I take that as an offense big time. This city, all the employees, when you get them together, they're like a family. They take care of each other too. And I'm up here right now. I'm kind of like the dad right now, because I am the mayor. But I'm going to take care of my people. You know, I, I say vote for it. I, I say yes on it. And I'm sorry I got emotional and everything, but that's how I feel. And I, I think right now, this is not a, it's not a bonus, it's a premium. And these guys are going to hate it next year when they pay their taxes. Because anytime you get more, when I retired, I got a little bit of extra money too, but God, it killed me in taxes. And so you better say, if you, if you get this money, you better save for your taxes too, guys. I mean, it sounds like it's all great and spend all this money, but you're going to have to save for your taxes too. And I hope this passes. I, I want to thank all you guys for what you do. I mean, you take, you take it personal. I mean, everybody I talk to come around. I, I don't know if it's just because I'm the mayor or what, but anytime I ask for anything, you guys will take care of me. I mean, it's great. And like, I've, I've had to call the ambulances, the police department shows up, everybody shows up for every, every little thing. My neighbors have called them. Public Works, they, they fix everything for you, you know? So this is not a, we're giving them anything extra. I mean, this is to, I feel that this is, in the past, we haven't been able to do it. And that the state finally gave us some money to do something with. You know, that we can make our own choice on it. They, they're not saying that we have to do this, and we're not doing this. But there's over $3 million that we can still use for everybody else. That's a lot of money. And we can get a lot of stuff done with that $3 million. And remember, we still have $4 million, not counting that, that we have in reserve, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
We have $7 million in reserve. I mean, we're, we're not going to spend it right now if we count that, whether $3 million in there. So that's a big, a big reserve, guys. I mean, it's not premium, and I say, give it to these people. They need it, and let's take care of them. Yes, sir.
This is a one-time deal. I don't think you'll, we've ever seen this before, and I don't think we'll ever see it again. This is an opportunity to reward employees who are there when you need them. You're paying them to be there when you need them and do what needs to be done when it needs to be done. This is recognition. You want to reward and recognize your employees at all, at all times. As far as Councilman Atkinson's Um, as far as, uh, Councilman Atkinson saying we should use the money for all these other projects, all these other things on her list. That's an excellent consideration, that, that makes sense. That's part of the data that you have to consider in making your decisions. Uh, making decisions is part of your elected duties. Um, however, on those projects, there's always money. You will always have projects. The projects don't go away. That's the business of cities. There's always, we're always gonna need water pipe. We're always gonna need valves. We're always gonna need a new water system. We're always gonna need a new fire station. We're always gonna need new vehicles. The government doesn't necessarily come up with this kind of a rescue plan to do all those things. You get that through taxes, you get that through grants. Special funding, special tax rates, uh, special assessments. But again, this is a never before and probably never again opportunity to reward your employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. What was your name?
My name is Tom Domakis.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Thank you. And just, just one thing to the, to the city employees out here. Because last time we sat here and I said, let's hold it over, Taron got back, yeah, I saw the faces out there. Yeah, I saw the evil eyes coming this way. But this is what I wanted for him to be able to speak on, because as once it's done, I'm not saying you're gonna come back to the next meeting, but you probably will be back at the next meeting. So to give this young man an opportunity to speak on his city, cause he's been here since father time. So you have to give him that. You, you, you have to. I mean, and I wasn't trying to do that, say, well, maybe he'll cry, but his emotions are gonna get the best of him because he's doing something that has never been done before. And God prayed that it will never have to be done again through a pandemic. So that's all I wanted to do. I wasn't saying you guys don't deserve it. Kick rocks, beat it. No, I wanted him to address you, to give his verbiage on what his true feelings were about the city, which he so loves. So that, that's all I was doing. That's all I was doing.
You're picking on me. We've been friends a long time. Um, and Adam and I are friends. We, we're still friends. No, um, okay, do we have a vote or motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by, uh, Councilman Horn, uh, seconded by, uh, Councilman Ramirez. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
So I'm gonna stand by what I said earlier. Um, I have to vote my conscience and my conscience is a no. However, um, you're gonna get your money. And I'm glad that you are the beneficiaries of people who will all vote me. I'm happy for you all. I really am. I'm happy for you. I swear to goodness, I am. I don't hate you all. I'm happy, really. I'm glad you're gonna be the beneficiaries of the council out voting me. So when this meeting's over, I'm gonna go out there and shake every one of your hands, cause I still love you all. I voted no, by the way.
Mayor approached him singles?
I vote yes.
Mayor Ramsey.
I vote aye. How did you vote? Okay, I vote yes. Okay. Well, congratulations, employees, and thank you for everything you guys do.
I got a quick question. How soon will this go out following payroll?
Um, it likely will not be, um, the next paycheck. It'll probably be within about thirty days.
Until the governor cancels it? Probably. Knock on wood.